Good morning, I'd like to call this meeting order and please rise if this is allowed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 3, any citizens in town to be heard? Item 4, consideration of possible action on amendments, big worry, third, 20.5. Motion to approve. I'll say we have a motion in a second, any discussion? Here in all favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Item 5, consideration of possible action on emergency response capability and impact grant program agreement for 50/50 grant for upgrades to sheriff's radio communication system. Steven or the sheriff, I don't know who's got the...
That'd be Steven.
Steven, do you have any information on this?
Yeah, so this was a grant that I filled out for and you guys approved and sheriff liked it too.
Any line?
It was a 50/50 match grant and so we thought how we could, there was different things you could use it on and so we thought communication equipment up in the dispatch center at the sheriff's office would be the best thing to use it on because those radios up there are old obsolete and outdated and that would give them new radios, a new computer system up there for the, operate the radios and everything, new recording system for it and everything. It was a very competitive grant, there was a lot of people that didn't get it so I guess I must have wrote a good one because we got the letter saying that we got it.
So the 50% coming out of your budget or your sheriff's?
I got about $5 if you don't have to.
I'll clarify, this is the state of Oklahoma, the grant came out of their ARPA money. So that's what this is, the total project is $250,000 so at 50/50 the county is at $125,000.
I entertain the motion.
I move to approve.
I'll say, I've got a motion in a second, any discussion? Here in all favor say aye.
Aye.
And my is chair is your only one that is part of this.
Item 6, consideration of possible action on random agreement between the US immigration and custody enforcement and Logan County Sheriff's to collaborate to enhance safety and security of the community by training certain LE personnel components and certain limited functions approved by ICE.
I got a question.
How do you tell you, what is LE personnel?
Law enforcement.
We got any?
We got a few, not as many as we need.
We'll have to answer some questions.
So I read through that thing and seems like, and I'm all about what the government's doing as far as the I, as far as getting the immigrants out or the illegal immigrants out, but the, why do they not want to pay?
Well, this is a, there's another facet going to come with this later, first we gotta get through the GCP program and get the training, pass the background, and then there'll come another holding side of that that has the potential to create some revenue.
Well, they, everything I was reading in that said that, said that the law enforcement agency was responsible for all salaries and benefits and all overtime. That could get costly, I mean, I don't know how much of that goes on around here, but overtime could get costly for a year.
Well, that's why we're gonna have two people that are gonna be assigned to this, that are gonna have the ability to serve ICE containers, to access the ICE software, to do the investigations, to determine who's illegal, who's not, things like that. It's not, it's only confined to the interior walls of the jail.
Right.
They have no authority outside of that. So, I mean, it's not gonna be, it's a task force that we're going out and assisting, it's only for those that come into our facility for us to be able to vet, to prove their legal status or prove that they're alien and get them on the list.
You can also read it right, that once you have somebody incarcerated, you can't do anything with them until that part of their incarceration is up and then as they come out, then your ICE agent that is trained arrests them again for ICE.
True, or a deal's worked with a district attorney to get them out of here. Because ultimately, I think that's, that's our objective is if, of course, depending on the crime, they're gonna be prosecuted here. I mean, if it's a little misdemeanor or something like that, it's bigger for me to get them back sent to their original country to keep them on our dime in the jail.
Have you had any?
We've had a few, but again, not having ICE here in the county, and we can't arrest on them being an alien.
Right.
And right now with what's going on throughout the United States, this is a way for us to take care of our facility and, because if there's a detainer on an illegal alien, we can't even do that, ICE has to do that. So this gives us the authority to be able to...
But this isn't giving you power to go out and round up?
No, absolutely not.
Only people that's already been incarcerated for another crime.
Yes, it's only that authority and deputization, if you will, jurisdiction only is in the confines of my detention center.
And you believe that later there will be...
Yes, this is a 48-hour hold, so that's how long we hold them before they're transferred. But there's also another side of that, piece of that that's gonna come where we can actually get paid for holding those for an extended amount of time, much like we do the marshals. There's only currently three jails in the state that are 287G's, we would be the fourth. And with that comes strict guidelines in our detention center inspections, I mean, multiple inspections and with us already housing the federal inmates, the 287G people are pretty excited about coming here because we do meet all the requirements, we do have a facility that they approve, that they like and just for now to get the paperwork and background done on those two individual guys who gave you the training.
Mark, do you have any more questions? I'll say. Got a motion in a second, any more discussion for?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Danny. Item 7, consideration of possible action on curbing microengineering in voice, $18,260.28 for the wagon wheel truck.
Who is that?
This is where we get a road use agreement with the wind curbing company to, for the impact of deal on our roads. We hired the engineering firm to make sure that they do everything on the road that they're supposed to do. Then the wind curbing company reimburses us for this contract that we get with this engineering firm. So Logan County did it, Warfield County and Logan County, we all use the same engineering firm, it's how we even got selected down. So this will be reimbursed back to the county. So we just made it up, we didn't reimburse us. I'll say. Got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Here in all favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Item 8, consideration of possible action on lease purchase agreement with community leasing on behalf of Whitpress Fire Department for $120,240.
This is the final leasing paperwork for the tanker truck purchase idea, we've signed lots of stuff to get this thing going. This is the final with community leasing, which is the bank carrying the lease purchase on this project.
I'm gonna take it as tanker is more than a tanker.
It is a, it is a 2024 Kenworth being built. So yeah, it's a massive, one of the big trucks, big tanker trucks.
Well, I get that, but like the tanker that District 1 has out there, I can buy several of them for $600,000. So I think it does more fire biting.
It is not a brush pumper, don't confuse it to the brush pumper. It is a tanker truck, so when you see a big fire engine, that's what you, that type.
It's gonna, it's gonna be the main source of water is what I'm gonna assume and it's gonna have boxes and carry tools and all of that, it's not your typical fire truck. I didn't want to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a brush pumper.
So if you do the math on us, a little over $200 per gallon of that, that's pretty expensive water.
So all the documents?
City water.
This side is the one board requirement signature, all of these money are authorized by the general.
Gee, thanks. What do you guys say, you wanna do this or it's a lot of sanding? I'm assuming Whitpress, they all agree?
I'll say.
I said this was a bid done through this board.
This is, to me, this is something that has a greater use than a deck on cypherside that all of them are carrying around today.
I got a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. So we have nothing else to say. Troy, what kind of interest rate are they paying on that?
6.
6. Too bad the trust could want it for 5.
The trust wouldn't have had to have bid it.
I don't know if we want to tie our money up for 10 years.
And I don't know that the trust could be...
Yeah, and that is legally, I don't, I don't know if that would be an option.
Got three more.
There's one I get. Slam that thing shut, we're not supposed to talk.
Should be a tab on the right side.
There's another spot on there marked down halfway down to the vice chair.
If you sign along, then I'll run through it, there's some more here.
I've had one anyway, I don't know why anymore you guys signed.
Yeah? If you sign along, then I'll run through it, there's some more here.
I checked her. I said one more and then the vice chair. Item 9, consideration of possible action on following ingress and egress agreements. I want the Mickey someone and that one to be James.
Jiggle Bruber, Jamie Harden.
I'll move to approve. I'll say to Floyd's motion. Got a motion in a second and any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll tell you, on mine, I'm gonna get over on this guy's private property, I gotta lower his field because our culvers won't rain anymore. The field's higher than that.
I have that same thing going on.
So that's our intent affair.
It should be on this next meeting agenda.
Item 10, consideration of possible action on detention transportation claims, November 2024 in the amount of $631.75. I move we approve. I'll say. A motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 11, consideration of possible action on revision of 20 direct position officer.
I have Mickey for 11.
No action on 11, 12, 13's consideration of possible action on controlling permanent road crossing permits for cop's communication.
Well, they're all over the...
This would be in District 1 on this first one.
When they were in the office the other day, they said they're about to wrap up.
I move to approve.
I'll say. We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Here in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, probably. You can't write my name, man. I'll say. Motion carries.
You know, we oughta get together about three times a month just to sound stuff.
Item 14, consideration of possible action on consent, begin the items.
Hey, Ron.
There's another spot on there marked down halfway down to the vice chair.
Item 9, consideration of possible action on following ingress and egress agreements. I want the Mickey someone and that one to be James.
Jiggle Bruber, Jamie Harden.
I'll move to approve. I'll say to Floyd's motion. Got a motion in a second and any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll tell you, on mine, I'm gonna get over on this guy's private property, I gotta lower his field because our culvers won't rain anymore. The field's higher than that.
I have that same thing going on.
So that's our intent affair.
It should be on this next meeting agenda.
Item 10, consideration of possible action on detention transportation claims, November 2024 in the amount of $631.75. I move we approve. I'll say. A motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 11, consideration of possible action on revision of 20 direct position officer.
I have Mickey for 11.
No action on 11, 12, 13's consideration of possible action on following permanent road crossing permits for cop's communication.
Well, they're all over the...
This would be in District 1 on this first one.
When they were in the office the other day, they said they're about to wrap up.
I move to approve.
I'll say. We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Here in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 15, consideration of possible action on revision of 20 direct position officer.
I have Mickey for 11.
No action on 11, 12, 13's consideration of possible action on following permanent road crossing permits for cop's communication.
Well, they're all over the...
This would be in District 1 on this first one.
When they were in the office the other day, they said they're about to wrap up.
I move to approve.
I'll say. We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Here in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, probably. You can't write my name, man. I'll say. I'll say. You know, we oughta get together about three times a month just to sound stuff. Item 14, consideration of possible action on consent, begin the items.
Hey, Ron. I think they're selling it.
Only one sitting on that. Only one on that.
That's it for consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll say. We got a motion in a second, any more discussion on consent agenda items? Here in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 15, discussion of possible action on quitting claims for payment for February 2025. We got a stack there. I'll say. I told you, boy, you can't just initial these if you mind. All in favor, say aye.
One transfer for foil fire department. Blank for the programs. Office in report.
Can you read this patch, you're looking by your thumb. Only one sitting from that one.
That's it, consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll say. You got a motion in a second, any discussion on consent agenda items? Here in the hall, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Fifteen, discussion of possible action on creating claims for payment for February twenty twenty five. We got a stack of them. As I told you, boy, you can't just a natural reason, you're lying. All opposed, same thing. I make a motion with approve of claims.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion on the claims? Here in the hall, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. We don't have anything for item sixteen, item seventeen's going to be comments, announcements, questions by the board of commissioners, or others, department heads. Mr. Steven?
No, just another round of possibly winter weather, and it's Tuesday and Wednesday.
Sheriff?
No, sir.
Martin?
Floyd?
Yep. I like that, my wife happy Valentine's Day, I'm sure she wants. I used to make it look bad.
Point order, that's not on the agenda.
Alrighty, item eighteen, consideration of possible action on the dirt. You know, you shouldn't make this board political. All in favor, say aye.
There's no second, motion's not, not a second.
Yeah, we got to stay here.
I'll second that, Louis.
All in favor, say aye. Our next meeting will be February twenty eighth, Friday.
I just bring it in.